It is 5:30. We will call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo.
I am so sorry.
Uh, councilmember Reyes.
Present.
Councilmember Stowe.
He will be back but not join. He had to leave and he will be back. Probably join us in closed session.
Vice Mayor Carrillo.
Present.
Mayor Ray. Mayor Flores.
I'm present. Must have been switch around of the nameplates for the pictures. Thank you so much. Oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak, items pertaining to closed session?
Hello, Jan.
Hi.
I'm David with California Medical Imaging again. I first off want to thank everybody on the building and planning department. We've made some leaps and bounds of progress with getting a building permit and putting together a new imaging center. So, thank you guys. I do have a proposal and a contract here. Part of the conditions of moving forward were to build a new ADA driveway. This driveway is on an easement, so we share this driveway with the city of Porterville. You guys are our neighbors with the animal shelter right next door. So, in order to, we'd like to move forward on this, but I wanted to first ask if it would be possible to split the costs on this. The driveway is approximately $17,850. This is proposed by Valley Oak Construction. And that's about it. This is on an easement. We have restructured the driveway and the sidewalk to meet ADA compliance. So, because we share this, we wanted to propose this solution so that you guys, when you have to build the animal shelter, you don't have to build a new driveway altogether. We could just share it. So, that's all I got. I'm not complaining here today. Just appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Then we will now move down to City Council closed session.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are five items before council in closed session this evening. The first pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Council Labor Negotiator, Initiative Negotiator John Lawless and Patrice Hildreth, employee organizations, Porterville Peace Officers Association, Public Safety Support Unit, Porterville City Employees Association, Management and Confidential Series, Porterville City Firefighters Association, Fire Officer Series, and all unrepresented management employees. Item two, Government Code Section 54956.95, Liability Claim Claimant, Susie Rodriguez, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item three, Government Code Section 54956.95, Liability Claim Claimant, Kylie Horton, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item four, Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D, subsection three, Council Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, eight cases in which facts are not yet known to the potential plaintiff. And item five, Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D, subsection four, Council Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case. Staffs report.
Thank you. It is 5:34. We will go into closed session.
Soon as Mr. Lawless comes in, waiting for him. Oh, yeah, where did John go? It is 6:40. We will reconvene open session and report on reportable action items taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item, on item number A three, claim by Kylie Horton on a motion by Councilmember Stowe, and seconded by Vice Mayor Carrillo in a five-zero vote. That claim was rejected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Stowe? And please remain standing if there would be anybody that would like to do the invocation or a moment of silence.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Please, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm Steve Walker, pastor at Valley Oak Community Church and chaplain for the Police Department and Fire Department here in Porterville. Let's pray. Father, we come tonight and honor you for who you are and your presence with us. And we know that your presence goes with us wherever we are, even in meetings. And Father, we thank you for that and for the opportunities we have to come together as a community with our heart that is focused on making our community a better place, to solve problems together, to be united in spirit. And Father, we thank you for that, and I pray for our city council as they work to achieve this, that you would direct them, guide and show them the right things to do, that you would be close in all the decisions that are made. Thank you for each head of each department in the city, that you would be with them as they work to accomplish the needed task before them, that you would keep them safe in their duties. Father, I thank you for our police officers and fire department personnel as they work to protect our community, to strive for the best, that you would keep them safe in their duties, that you would watch over and care for them and their families in this difficult time and their jobs, that you would just be especially close and give them peace in their tasks. Father, we honor you tonight and all of these things and look forward to what you are going to accomplish because we trust these things to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? If not, please be seated. It's been a while, and we now will go into the presentations of the Employees of the Month. It's so exciting to see those that are here. I will begin with Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Your Honor, and indeed it is a pleasure to begin the process of acknowledging the Employees of the Month, as it has been a long time, as you've mentioned. So let's start it off with Police Department Employee of the Month, April 2022, Justin Elastad. Would you please come forward? And if you want to stand there after I read a little bit about you, I'll probably ask you to make some comments of your own. So I'll go ahead and start. So Officer Justin Elastad started with the Porterville Police Department in October of 2016. Officer Elastad was selected as a K-9 handler in March of 2019, a field training officer in April of 2020, and a member of the Neighborhood Crime Suppression Unit in July of 2020. He is also a member of the Special Weapons and Tactics Team. As a K-9 handler, Officer Elastad has been able to improve his understanding of applicable case law and has frequently demonstrated solid decision-making skills when deploying or choosing not to deploy his K-9 partner. As a field training officer, Elastad is looked to as a trainer and mentor to newer officers. While assigned to the NCSU, Officer Elastad was instrumental in helping to make numerous significant arrests involving recovered stolen vehicles, illegal firearms possession, and sizable amounts of illegal drugs. During this assignment, Officer Elastad made it a point to improve his investigative skills and his own learned and on his own learn-to-write complex search warrants, utilize social media as an effective investigative tool, put together and execute tactical and investigative operations, and effectively use confidential informants to obtain important investigative leads. Officer Elastad has a three-year-old daughter and enjoys spending time with his family and being outdoors. Officer Elastad previously worked from 2008 to 2011 in the Alaska Commercial Fishing Industry, where he spent six to nine months each year on the water in fishing boats. Would you please join me in congratulating Justin Elastad as the Police Department Employee of the Month for April 2022?
Justin, you know why everyone's clapping, because they're impressed with the fishing boat for six to nine months.
Everybody likes to hear about my time in Alaska. I just wanted to say thank you to my family first and foremost, my mom, Dean, or my mom, Rhonda, my dad, Dean, my girlfriend, Robin, my little girl, Claire. I also want to say thank you to all my administrators, my supervisors, my coworkers especially. I couldn't do without them. You know, we're all a team and a family and the Police Department. I want to say thank you to Council and Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, and we'll keep it moving here with the Parks and Leisure Services Employee of the Month for April 2022, Tristan Cardoza. Would you please come forward? Tristan Cardoza was employed by the City of Porterville as a Parks Maintenance Worker One for the Police Department in January of 2001. Tristan was promoted to Parks and Leisure Services Maintenance Worker Two in 2005, where he worked at the Heritage Center maintaining the interior and exterior of the facility. After eight years of service there, he transferred to the golf course where he currently works. In addition to grounds maintenance at the golf course, some of Tristan's other duties include city facility buildings maintenance, and he is the lead maintenance person for the city's pool. Tristan has obtained his certified pool operator license. He also built the frames that the Wall of Fame photos are displayed in. Tristan thoroughly enjoys problem-solving while working alongside his coworkers. His goal is to promote to a supervisor and then superintendent. Tristan has been married to his wife, Courtney, for 18 years. They have two daughters, Aubrey 16 and Hayden 12. When Tristan isn't at work, he spends time coaching Porterville High School Varsity Boys Water Polo. He is also the head coach for the Porterville Hurricanes Swim Team. In addition, he has obtained his USA Swimming Official credential. His hobbies include fly fishing, taking his Jeep on unpaved roads, and being an unpaid Uber driver for his daughters. Tristan would like to thank the City of Porterville for providing an opportunity to learn, grow, and raise a family. Join me in congratulating City of Porterville Employee of the Month for Parks and Leisures for April 2022, Mr. Tristan Cardoza.
Again, it's been almost 22 years I've been with the City of Porterville. Every day is an adventure. I may be at the golf course, but they probably see me here at City Hall. They'll see me in the parks. They'll see me at the pool. And if you don't see me here, I'm usually doing something with the youth in this town. That's a big thing for me in this town, and I think it should be a big thing for all of us. So thank you again. Thank you, City of Porterville.
I'm now going to go with Councilmember Stowe.
Engineering and Project Management Employee of the Month, April 2022, Sarah Weaver. Sarah began her employment with the City of Porterville in December 2004 as a clerical assistant to accepting, processing, monitoring, and issuing building permits. She was an integral part of the Building Division with knowledge in permitting for all types of construction and assisting with the permitting software upgrade. Sarah, being hired, Sarah's earned a bachelor degree in business administration with a focus in project management while working full-time with the city, and her knowledge level of work and responsibility increase, she has been promoted multiple times in the department. Sarah is currently an administrative project manager and is responsible for federal and state aid, documentation and reimbursements, tracking of spending on projects, assisting with the projects, the bids, preparation and notice. Legal notices for both the Building and Engineering Division assisting with grant applications, required reporting, project labor compliance, assisting with the departments with project delivery, assisting with delivery of public works and related projects, and delivering of building and related projects. Phew, you do a lot. Assignments where Sarah was instrumental in her success include the East Porterville Water Project, the Measure I Sales Tax Campaign, where she worked with and was described as impeccable by the former police chief Eric Croto, multiple projects relating to the tragic library fire, including the demolition of the damaged structure and the smoke and soot damage rehabilitation of City Hall and Fire Station 71, the temporary Larry Bay project, the Whale Project Number 35, as well as many other projects currently in the works. Sarah is married to Shannon, and they are proud to share that their daughter, Ireland, is currently working through her undergrad studies with the goal of becoming a psychologist focusing on PTSD. We are proud of all Sarah's accomplishments over the years and lucky to have her. She is a key resource in helping the department accomplish all these things. Congratulations, Sarah Weaver, for being chosen as Engineered Project Manager Employee of the Month, April 2022.
I'd like to just say thank you to Council and Administration and to my boss, Javier. He's a, he, I know melts that I do a lot, but you know, it helps when you have people around you who are supportive and good teams. And I think I feel blessed to enjoy my job and be supported by people who have the same goals, which is making things better in our community. And I get that in our department, plus the departments I help out. So I feel very blessed for that. So thank you.
Our next employee, Fire Department Employee of the Month, April 22, Coy Fonsworth. Coy started his career with the Porterville Fire Department in 2011 as a reserve firefighter and was subsequently hired as a public education officer in January 2013. In April of 2014, he was hired as a full-time firefighter in January of 2022 and was promoted to engineer. Coy is part of the peer support team with an emphasis on first responding support and serves as the Lieutenant Commander of the PFD Honor Guard, where he has represented the department in the Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Maryland. He is a member of the Public Information Office team assisting with coordinating events and disseminating information through our social media platform. He is part of the Department of Policy Committee and an instructor in our firefighter recruit academy and has been instrumental in rolling out new technology and software to make our department more efficient. Coy's favorite part of the job is getting to spend quality time with his brothers and sisters in the Fire Department. He is engaged to his fiancee, Katrina, and is honored to have two godchildren, Sienna and Carson. In his spare time, enjoys spending time with his family, camping in Sierras, attending Chargers and games, Dodger. Man, I'm sorry, but I get choked up when I say that name, Dodgers, Dodger games, and tinkering with computers. Please join me in congratulating Coy for all the Fire Department Employees of the Month.
I just want to thank the city council and, as everybody said, the administrators. I want to thank my chief, the rest of my fire family, my biological family, my parents, Coy Senior, Sandy, my little brother, Alex, and my fiancee, Katrina. Thank you, guys.
I will go with now Councilmember Tate.
This award is for Public Works, this employee is from Public Works, and she's going to be receiving Employee of the Month for April 2022. Rowena Jose. Rowena began, excuse me, began her career with the City of Porterville on June 20th, 2005 as a clerical assistant and has promoted her way up to her current position of administrative aide in the Field Service Division of the Public Works Department. Rowena has proved to be an exemplary employee exhibiting many characteristics and qualities that are an asset to the department. She is dependable, strong, self-motivated, who reports to work early and stays till the job gets done. She gives careful attention to details and always shows consistent effort and interest in her assigned tasks. Rowena is always courteous, very adaptive, and constantly has a positive attitude. Rowena is always courteous, very adaptive, and constantly has a positive attitude. She is a team player and shows dedication by selflessly giving her time and putting forth her extra efforts to the department. Her years of experience with the city is instrumental in assuring positive customer relationships and leadership in the office. Rowena has graduated from San Jose State University with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in accounting. She has been married to her husband Chris for 19 years and is a youth leader at the First Southern Baptist Church in Early Mart and considers the church youth to be her kids. She is also currently working with other churches in a community outreach effort to help the youth in Delano and Early Mart areas. Please join me in congratulating Rowena as the Public Works Employee of the Month. Thank you so much.
I didn't know we were supposed to say something. I just want to say thank you. I'm just truly humbled and honored to receive this recognition. I, it's been a great opportunity to work for the City of Porterville. This team is awesome, and I, you know, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to my boss, Mike, who's always been a great mentor for me. So, thank you, Mike.
Vice Mayor Carrillo.
Good evening. For Finance, Employee of the Month for April 2022 is Gabby Cruz. Is Gabby here? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read. For the month of April 2022, we are honoring Gabriella Cruz as the City of Porterville's Employee of the Month, representing the Finance Department. Gabby, as we call her, joined the Finance Team as an Account Clerk One in February of 2007. She started at the front counter with cash collections, helping our customers in processing their transactions. She showed excellent customer service, always professional and polite to everybody. It became quickly apparent that Gabby is one of our more dedicated staff with excellent work habits and a great attitude. Within a few months' time, Gabby was promoted to an Account Clerk Two and was assigned to be the Chief Accounts Receivable Clerk. She quickly learned and mastered the accounts receivable module and billing process. In this position, she was responsible for the collection of several thousand dollars and passed due accounts. In July of 2013, Gabby was promoted to an Administrative Aid and took over comprehensive payroll responsibilities. In September 2019, she was promoted to a Payroll Accountant One. Twice each month, Gabby processes over 500 timesheets and provides for accurate and timely payments to city employees. Besides administering pay transactions, Gabby is responsible for maintaining and updating the employee files, including each employee's pay rates, numerous benefits, and deduction codes, also leave usage, balance, and payroll taxes. She prepares several reports as required by different state and federal agencies. Gabby has a great work ethic, well-organized, and is always dependable. She exudes a positive attitude and a willingness to help others at all times. Gabby is married to Ruben. They moved to Porterville from the LA area in 2002. They have two children, Ruben Junior and Jasmine. Gabby likes to cook and bake and try new things. She especially loves spending time with her family, traveling, and visiting different places. Congratulations to Gabby, and thank you for your exemplary service to the city.
And I hadn't heard this today, but the reason Gabby's not here is because her sister passed away today.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you. Community Development, Employee of the Month, Luisa Savala. Luisa Savala began her career with the city in February 2008 as a deputy city clerk, and as of May 2019, she joined the Community Development Department where she promoted to Administrative Analyst. In her new role, Luisa has been focusing on securing grants for the City of Porterville. She has demonstrated great articulation, research skills, and collaboration with other partners and agencies to write successful grant applications. The first was for $400,000 for the First Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance Program, which will assist low-income families in purchasing their new home. The second was for an Active Transportation Program Grant to be used for improving pathways for bicyclists and pedestrians. The award received was for $7.1 million, one of the largest grants to be received by the city, which will be called the Butterfield Stage Corridor Project and will consist of the development of a transportation corridor for non-motorized users that utilizes former Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way between College Avenue to the South and West North Grand Avenue to the North. The corridor will consist of a Class One multi-use path that includes many amenities for user comfort and safety and will improve mobility and access to park and open space. Most recently, Luisa was successful in writing a $3.7 million Clean California Grant to improve the Santa Fe Byway of the Rails to Trails Project between Henderson Avenue and Walnut Avenue. When she is not serving the City of Porterville, Luisa enjoys watching movies and playing board games with her husband Mike, her son Alexander, family and friends. She has an impressive collection of succulents and also recently has tried her hand in house plants. Good luck with that. Through the years, Luisa has achieved several awards and certificates. Among them include Employee of Month in 2010, '14, and '15, a Certified Municipal Clerk Certificate, and the most important one, Best Mom Ever, card from her son Alexander. Her 2022 goals are to continue to secure more grant funds for the city, read more, and laugh often. Please join me in congratulating Luisa Savala as a Community Development Employee of the Month for 2022.
I just want to say thank you to the council and thank you to my supervisors, Jason and Claudia. Thank you to my son Alexander for accompanying me today. Thank you to my husband, who is not here because he's at work, but this is recorded, so just want that documented in case he decides to check out the video later. I want to thank my fellow Community Development employees and also other employees from the other departments. I'm fortunate enough to work with a lot of great people, and I'm just happy to work with the city and to continue doing my part to make the City of Porterville a better place. Thank you.
So, if I can, we think that is the first four-time Employee of the Month winner, so rarefied air.
And Alexander is excited about getting all the airtime.
I was going to say, all right, I have another one. In Administration, Juliana Andrade. Juliana was first introduced to the City of Porterville through a CSET Youth Program in 2005. In 2006, she was hired by the City of Porterville as a library aide and promoted to a full-time library assistant in 2011. During her 10 years of library service, Juliana built strong professional and personal relationships with her library patrons and her library family. In search of professional growth, in 2016, Juliana accepted the position as Executive Assistant to the City Manager, which provided her with the opportunity to expand her knowledge of city functions and gain a comprehensive understanding of city business. Two years later, in 2018, Juliana promoted to Administrative Analyst within the Human Resources Division and again in July 2021 to her current position as Administrative Analyst Two. Juliana handles a variety of HR and risk management functions, including but not limited to administering the day-to-day operations of the city's employee medical plan, employee-related COVID-19 responses, employee negotiations, disciplinary actions, and serving as the city's alternate board member on the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Authority. During the pandemic, Juliana displayed a remarkable ability to professionally and adeptly handle unique and rapidly changing directions concerning COVID-19, all while maintaining her existing workload. Juliana is an exemplary employee and a true asset to the City of Porterville. Juliana graduated from Porterville High School in 2007 and continues to be committed to her professional development through her attendance at HR-related workshops and conferences. She has a bachelor's degree in organizational leadership and is a graduate of the Leadership Porterville Class of 2017. Juliana is married to Francisco, and together they have two very handsome and young, bright boys, seven-year-old Lucas and one-year-old Mateo. When not at work, Juliana enjoys spending time with her family, hiking, and shopping, and dancing. I added that. I added that. Please join me in congratulating the City of Porterville Employee of the Month, Juliana Andrade.
Hello, everyone. Fortunately, my family couldn't be here. Lucas is today's first baseball practice, so he was excited. Thanks, Donnie, for scheduling on the city council date. And Mateo is one, and he would have been up on the dais already, so he was not allowed to come. I just want to thank everybody, thank the council, thank everybody, you know, for your mentorship, your guidance, and also all of the HR office girls are here, and they've been supportive throughout these crazy past two years, and they're here to show some support again. So, thank you to them, thank you to you all.
Are there any other recognitions?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We'd like to, it's not on your agenda, but we'd like to recognize at this time Chief, Chief Carrillo. And at this time...
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Mayor members, members of council. Yeah, this is a bittersweet moment for me. Rick resigned last week as a lieutenant with the Porterville Police Department, but he has accepted a new role as the Chief of Police for the City of Lindsay. I've known Rick for 16 years. Rick and his contributions to the Porterville Police Department, he's been an integral part of what has happened over the last couple decades at the Police Department. He will continue to educate himself with very fluid changes in law enforcement, and he'll bring that to the City of Lindsay. Rick and I have talked quite a bit about challenges in my office last week before he accepted this new challenge. But like the Porterville Police Department, we say that challenges are just opportunities disguised, and we discussed that last week. So, with that, I'm extremely confident in Rick's abilities to lead Lindsay into a new era. Chief Rick Carrillo now makes the fourth sitting Police Chief that has come from the Porterville Police Department ranks, followed by Chief Hall, Chief Rich Stanridge, who's in bishop, and myself, and now Rick. So, congratulations to Rick, and thank you for everything you've done for the City of Porterville.
Hey, I want to say thanks to a lot of people. 16 years, it was tough. It was tougher to say goodbye than I ever thought it would have been. Because Porterville wasn't a 16 years. It's like dog years are times seven. Porterville Police Department, work years is times two, because you do a lot, you learn a lot. And I'm grateful to that, because that's what gained the, all the experience I needed to advance, all the opportunities. So I want to thank the man above for the strength to have achieved all that, right? It wasn't easy at all, and it was his help that guided me along the way. I want to thank my wife. She's here during the recognition. She's there during the trial, too. I want to thank the council for the recognition, Mr. Lawless, Chief Costello, again, for all the challenges. And, you know, I truly felt supported by the City of Porterville. So those of you that are sitting here, to me, are representing all 64,000 of them. So, thank you all very, very much.
That was a bittersweet moment for several of us. We, for selfish reasons, I would have liked to have kept you here, but when it comes to the growth of your potential, that you're coming from Porterville's finest, congratulations.
Can I just say, Mayor, I want to say what a pleasure it has been to work. He is the, to work with Rick, he is chief, I should say. I got to get out of the whole Rick thing. He's now chief, and he's earned every bit of that title. He is the best-dressed person at the city this side of me and Councilmember Stowe. We're both trying to catch up with him. So, but I just want to say thank you and very best wishes. It took everything inside me not to say something three weeks ago when you were here being recognized, knowing that where you were in the process. So, I thought it only fitting for you to be able to be back this evening and properly recognize you for your accomplishment.
Okay, what a moment. Congratulations to all the recipients of Employee of the Month, and the best to you, Chief Carrillo, in your endeavor. We will now go on into Oral Communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward under Oral Communications? Please state your name and address for the record, please. Please come to the podium.
My name is David Harris with Consolidated Testing.
My name is Zach Boudreaux. I'm the manager at Consolidated Testing. We're here regarding what will, when you get there, will be... And they also moved to an online bidding process, which we're not used to. We've been the city of Porterville's lab for more than 20 years without actually having to submit a bid, and now that we've switched to this, it was a bit confusing to get into the groove of what we had to do to get this bid properly submitted and get on that list. It turned out that we were about 22 minutes late from the time we were supposed to have the bid physically into the engineering office, and so we'd like to submit an appeal to allow us to be on that list, given our track record with the city of Porterville, regardless of that short tardiness that we had with our proposal. And we have a letter here for you, if you guys want to explain...
You might want to leave it with staff. Is there someone else that would like to come forward under Oral Communications, please?
Brock Neely, address on record, Fernando. Some light reading for the city council. Only 67 pages, mostly pictures, but it's good news. Once again, I bring good news to be proud of Tulare County. Two years ago, the close of the year, we ended the year with 36 suicides in the county of Tulare. Last year, we ended with 18. It's 18 too many, but it's half of what we had the previous year. With all the experts saying that with COVID, suicide rates were going to go through the roof, we've spent multiple millions of dollars over the last 11 years pushing out information on resources, having resource fairs, health fairs, telling people that depression is curable. Suicide is a permanent problem to a temporary, or a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And that's a phrase that I coined, that they actually took and put in our strategic planning. There's actually a chart in there that shows since 2009, since we started the Suicide Prevention Task Force, our annual suicide rate. Six years ago, we were at 59. Last year, we ended up with 18. All the counties around us had double-digit gains. Most of the counties in the state of California had double-digit gains last year. And no women this last year. So, be proud of what you've done with your tax dollars in this county. State of California is the only state that has dedicated funding in the budget for suicide prevention, prevention, and early intervention. That's the reason why California is doing as well as it is in suicide prevention over the rest of the country. The average over the rest of the country is a 35% increase every year. California, on average, it's about a 5% or 6% increase. Tulare County, well, we had 100% decrease. I like 100% decreases. Let's keep it going.
Thank you. Is there someone else? Please come forward.
It's my first time, so. My name is Brenda Lee Brooks. I live in, do I need to give my address? I live here in Porterville, 168 Carmelita. I'm here representing the Grace Project, which is a homeless outreach that is made up of a group of like-minded people with a heart for the homeless. We believe the love that we show can change the very atmosphere in which we live. We operate strictly through volunteers and donations. We're blessed beyond measure to be able to go out and reach the lost and minister to them and help them with their daily needs. I'd like to thank PAC, Viselu Rescue Mission, Kiwanis, and countless people, citizens in Porterville that have stepped up to help us with all of the donations that we've been able to provide. We go out monthly, and I personally put together hygiene packets and food packets to hand out to the people. When I ask them what they liked most and what was most useful in their hygiene packs, most of them responded that it was the toilet paper and the wipes, because they could, I guess, wipe their bows and wipe their faces. So, anyway, it just is really sad and heartbreaking to see what's happened with our homeless population, and I'd like to help be part of the solution, and I would hope and pray that we can begin to start having a conversation about what we can do to work together to resolve some of the issues that we come across. I know that we're just barely scratching the surface, but there's a lot of things that I know that we could collaborate together with and try to come up, and maybe the city of Porterville, we're new at this, we're only nine months old, so, you know, maybe there's some resources that I'm not aware of. I'd like to get connected with as many people and resources as possible so that we can try to help. I would like to have it considered, like even bringing a shower out, a portable shower that could, the water could be recycled. You have lots and lots of volunteers that would be happy to man it, and, you know, so that people could just, like, get a shower once a month. These people, some of them haven't even had any kind of hygiene showers in a long time. And so, anyway, I just hope and pray that we can work together. This is basically just an introduction to let you know that we're out in the community and that we're looking to be part of the solution, and hope that we can get on board with you and that we can work together.
Thank you very much for that. Is there someone else that would like to come forward, please?
Good evening, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Carrillo, and City Council. I'm Kristy Martin, and I wanted to introduce myself as the new CEO of the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. So, I transitioned into my role a week ago, and I've been working very closely with Christina to be able to get caught up to speed and to be able to learn how I can help serve our community. I did just want to share that we do have an upcoming ambassador meeting tomorrow. We have monthly meetings with our ambassadors, who are volunteers who come in to help the chamber, serve our community, and be able to advocate for our businesses. And we are also currently working on securing our lineup for the upcoming Music on Main Street series. So, we are looking to, we are scheduled to begin on Friday, April 15th, and we are going to go through Friday, May 20th. And so, I am just looking forward to being able to serve our community and to be able to work closely together with city council and city staff, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for the introduction. It is appreciated. Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward, please?
Reading Strawn, 54 West Danner Avenue, Porterville, California. On March 15th, which is the last meeting, I attended the city council meeting, and four hours, 13 minutes, and 22 seconds into the meeting, before the council members finished making their closing statements, I left the meeting. The next morning, someone sent me an email with a video. The email said, "Did you see this?" It was a video of the closing statements of the council members that occurred two minutes after I had left that meeting. Monti Reyes was calling citizens of Porterville that voiced their concerns, uninformed Johnny-come-latelys that don't know what they're talking about, that they come in on the tail end of issues, that they have unresolved anger issues, et cetera. Monti also stated that 99.999% of Porterville voters are happy with the job the city council is doing. If you think this is true, Monti, you're truly and completely delusional. Have a town hall meeting where the voters can tell you how they feel and be allowed to ask questions. Walk your districts that you were elected to represent and ask the voters how they feel about how you're doing. Some of you have forgotten who trusted you and voted you into your city council position. I've been attending these meetings for over a year now, and many times, there were only two people in the audience. I have usually been the only one that offers to give the invocation. In the past, I have verbally expressed my informed opinions in the three minutes allowed. Now that there are more citizens attending these meetings, some of the city council doesn't seem to like it. Porterville is starting to wake up and take notice of what goes on here and what is going on in Porterville. Voters are finding out they can make a difference on November 3rd of 2022 and November 3rd of 2024. The only one that has an anger problem is Mount Monti Reyes, and he proved that on January 18th, when he verbally exploded and pounded his gavel when a Porterville citizen was making a comment Monti didn't like. The same evening before the council meeting even started, I was personally arrested at the request of the council, because I wouldn't leave the building. I was arrested and hauled away in a police car and detained at the police station until they finally released me. Yes, Monti Reyes, you have an anger problem and should resign, in my opinion. Before you lose control again when someone says something you don't agree with, you aren't qualified to serve as a city councilman. The city council must be advocates for the voters that elected them, or they will be voted out of office or recalled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else? Please hold your applause. Is there someone else? Please come forward.
My name is Greg Meister. I live at 1160 Jean Avenue. I wanted to start with preserving our police and protection and continued police funding. I seen that you guys hired three more police officers this last week. It's great news. I love to see it. Something that's happened through COVID-19, there's a couple things, and really what sticks out to me is criminals are emboldened right now. They are on a rise. I had a shooting just up the street from my house, and it went all the way out to 190 out by the Family Health Care. Yes, that's where the shooting ended up. Two people were shot, right? Fallen Heroes Park, there's a pedophile that was released, and eight days later, our police had to arrest this man again for exposing himself. And then all the way to the sheriff department in that shootout where there was four guys that robbed five dairies. And my point is, is criminals are emboldened right now, and they're on a rise, and for some of these reasons, I believe, this is my opinion, but COVID, we had sick officers, right? And so, the force had to adapt and overcome, and there were missing vehicles, missing police officers on the street during this time. And so, these criminals saw this, and they said, "Hey, we can get away with what we're doing." Another thing is, our social media and media has demonized our police. And I know this room, you guys back the blue, and I could see that tonight, and it makes me, I'm pleased to see it. But we have to do a better job as constituents and letting the police know that we have their back at all times. They have the hardest job in society, and I respect what they do, and I'll always back them. Supporting our local businesses, I was very pleased to see you guys vote 5-0 at the last city council meeting for that local business owner, and it sounds like the CTO guys have got the same thing going, and I know you guys are going to do what's right for them, because they are a small business, locally owned, right here in Porterville, and we've got to take care of them, right? Especially after what happened with COVID-19. Responsible city growth. Last city council meeting, there was engineer plans to upgrade an office here, and I understand that we have to remodel, we have to do things like new roofs, if there's a leaky roof, we have to do it, right? But there was a bid from our engineer department for, I think, 26 grand, and then we got a quote for 76 grand, and we went through with it. We voted it through, and I think that's, it's not good, a good way of spending our tax dollars.
30, I just wanted to allow more time for...
No, I'm going to allow 30 seconds to summarize. I will allow the 30-second summarization. Thank you.
So, down to responsible city growth. We have decaying streets, right? This street on Lombardi is a problem. I don't know if you guys have gone and looked, but there's traffic for three times a day, and it's over an hour long for these parents trying to get their kids to school. And if we have some kind of disaster, right, from a robbery to someone having a heart attack to a fire, we're not going to be able to get vehicles in, and it's going to be our city's problem.
Thank you, Mr. Meister. Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come forward, please?
I live here in Porterville, and I just am one of the concerned citizens. So, there's all kinds of things that we need to be able to get together on. I just want you to know that I came from the Bay Area 20 years ago, and I apparently used to vote, I didn't, really wasn't involved in these processes, okay? And I've learned a lot in these past four years, and I've done research myself, and I've decided where my family should stand and things like that. Now, it's not for me to tell you guys what to do, so as far as like how you vote or who you, but I think as community, we need to come together, and it doesn't matter what side of the fence you're on. I think we deserve to be heard just as much as you do. So, and when we were applauding, I think we were all standing up and applauding these amazing workers, I think it's fair to say that when other people in your community have something to say, they deserve to be applauded, too, because it takes a lot for somebody to come up here and kind of just speak their piece. So, with that being said, I was floored by what this gentleman said about our, I'm so glad that we're lowering the people that are dying from suicide, but let's not forget all of the drugs that are killing people, okay? A lot of people aren't intending to kill themselves on drugs, but with the influx of everything coming into our city, our police are doing their best. I follow them all the time, and between them and Tulare County, they are constantly, I mean, there's people that they're probably throwing in jail, and they're getting right back out, just like everybody else. So, I know you guys are seeing it, too. So, we can't just focus on what one side of the fence wants to focus on. We need a town hall, and so I'm asking you guys, if we can, as a community, instead of here in this building, we can come up with a town hall that every single person in this community can be a part of, because I think it's only fair that everyone gets their voice and not just whoever some would like to express their feelings. I understand certain people come here more than I do, but I am not seeing a fair playing field when it comes to people's voices, and I know that the Grace Project, I know, I can almost say 99.9% of them are Republicans, and they are out there doing jobs that they're not getting paid for. So, she deserved the standing ovation, just like everybody else in here, okay? So, I just want you guys to kind of just feel your community, I mean, all, everybody in the community matter. It's not just one side or the other. And so, if you guys start actually going out in the community and talking to people that maybe you don't agree with, maybe we can actually find some common ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jill Lynch. I reside at 852 East Poplar Avenue and have been, lived within the Porterville city limits for 50-plus years. I'm a former 20-year-plus member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I helped develop the first Chamber Ambassador Program and served as an ambassador for five years. I am here to address what appears to possibly be the revolving door of the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce.
And they are out there doing jobs that they're not getting paid for. So she deserved the standing ovation, just like everybody else in here, okay? So I just want you guys to kind of just feel your community. I mean, everybody in the community matter. It's not just one side or the other. And so if you guys start actually going out in the community and talking to people that maybe you don't agree with, maybe we can actually find some common ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jill Lynch. I reside at 852 East Poplar Avenue and have been, lived within the Porterville city limits for 50-plus years. I'm a former 20-year-plus member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I helped develop the first Chamber Ambassador Program and served as an ambassador for five years. I am here to address what appears to possibly be the revolving door of the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is an important and vital part of one's community. Since the council often refers to percentages, 63% of the most community residents are likely to buy from a Chamber member, which should be an incentive to belong. We haven't had a viable Chamber since Stephanie Cortez resigned. My first point would be the pay may not be nearly enough when one considers the never-ending hours expected to fill the job description and to do the job well. The average salary for a Chamber CEO is $63,000 annually. I believe the city pays $50,000 annually, and of course, salary is commensurate to experience and education. Has the council actually ever used a professional hiring agency, Headhunter, or sought other hiring practices from other cities? Or is the position simply posted on the internet and hopes for the best? I truly question the importance and priority of the Chamber's role where the council is concerned. The council appointed Mr. Reyes as CEO while he was serving as a member of the city council. This begs the question, was this intended to be a short-term appointment? Or what else was done to fill the vacancy? It would seem a total conflict of interest. Second point, the Chamber receives $35,000 annually from the city's council, and that truth has been in place for 15 years. With that current cost of living that we all experience, is this a realistic amount? At an audit meeting of the Chamber with city council members in attendance, it was revealed, past financial quarterly reports were not turned in. Did the city council investigate as to why the reports were never filed? This resulted in the current CEO to now receive the Chamber funds quarterly. How can an organization run a business that way and abide by a yearly business plan? Now, the CEO has to speak to the council as if on trial to see if a proposed event will be approved and funded. The uncertainty of this is not only intimidating, but if not approved, a total waste of valuable time. In closing, on a positive note, the Chamber has a full board for the first time in a very long time, all volunteers, and I wish the new CEO, Kristi Martin, great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some of that will be discussed when that item comes up, under scheduled matters. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come up for oral communications? See that there are none. Do we have any virtually?
No, Your Honor.
We do not. All right, then, we will now move on to the AB 1234 reports. This is the opportunity for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to government code 53232.3. The Tulare County Water Commission, the majority of us attended virtually. The meeting had begun as informational. We didn't have a quorum, but 15 minutes later, someone chimed in electronically. It was to reaffirm the resolution to allow teleconferencing for Water Commission meetings. The minutes of January 10th, 2022 were approved. The 2022 Tulare County Water Commission priorities are the consolidating of small water and sewer systems, streamlining process for local entity formation for water and sewer systems, grants for green energy for wastewater treatment plants, funding for ongoing operation and maintenance, funding or extension of service to properties with private domestic wells, evaluate the administrator role, funding to address subsidence effects in the Tulare County, funding for the Fryncurn Canal fix, implementation of Sigma, forest management funding and legislation, water bond wastewater funding, regular meetings of the Water Legislation Subcommittee, support legislation for emergency funding for sewer emergencies. The drought and project funding update, we were provided with a slide presentation with the information status of 2022. Well permits, January through March, there are a total of 124, broken into categories under construction, domestic 31, community 0, agriculture 58, industrial 0, dairy 0, destruction 29, other 6. There are 180 tanks installed and receiving hauled water. Bottle water program, 1,071 household enrolled, receiving two to three applications weekly. The legislative update with regard to the Water Commission, there were several assembly bills that are now dead and they are inactive. With regard to the active SB 230 Constituents of Emergency Concern, that is the one that is active, new bills are going to continue the monitoring through this legislation. AB 1642 Sequel Water Systems and Private Well Exemption, AB 2113 Cleanup and Abatement Account, AB 2387 Safe Drinking Water Wildlife Prevention, Drought Prevention, Flood Protection, et cetera. And there was a Senate bill that was brought through the Legislation Committee with regard SB 1426 Cannabis, and it had to do with water pollution crimes. The commission took action on this, went to forward to the Board of Supervisors to send a letter as deemed pertinent to the bill. And the update was provided for the Tulare Kern DAC Program Sigma that pretty much summarized this meeting with a comment that was made. There is still commission vacancies for District 3 and 4. If anyone is interested for that information, just go on to the website for the Water Commission. The next meeting is scheduled for April the 12th, 2022. The Tulare County Task Force on Homelessness. We met on March 16th. City Manager, Councilmember Stowe and I attended in person. Included with this in person was Mr. Noah Whitaker and their legal counsel. In attendance virtually from the city of Porterville was Claudia Calderon. All of the other members of the task force who attended the meeting were on virtually. There were no public comments. The first order of business again is to allow the resolution for the Task Force Committee to continue to hold meetings virtually and remotely. The minutes of February 16th, 2022 were approved. Shannon Tolbert was introduced at this meeting. She is the Health and Human Service Agency Deputy Director of the Integrated Services Team. Noah Whitaker provided updates to Project Room Key, Home Key, including an update on the vaccination efforts among residents without housing. I reported out at one of the council meetings in March that I would be asking the county at a meeting, at one of the homeless task force meeting, how much had the county received for the homeless efforts? And I stated at that meeting that it was time to make the ask. Before the PowerPoint slide presentation during this meeting, I framed the question. I stated that Porterville has room for expansion in services at the Navigation Center, the Welcome Center. And I asked, what can they tell me with regard to the county homeless effort funding? And that we, as a city, for the city of Porterville, could use some of that funding for capital, such as the ARPA other sources. As the discussions unfolded, it is evident that the funds were exhausted into two projects, and it was the Tagus and Sequoia Village. More discussion will follow with the homeless task force, but in particular with the county with regard to this. One question that we had asked with that interest led to the next scheduled matter, which we were provided a presentation on the homeless multidisciplinary team. The efforts, the projects were shared, where funding was allocated, highlighting the partnerships and what are the next step. The next presentation was to discuss the creation of a homeless action plan as required by the HHAP 3.0 Funding Application. This is a focus for youth set aside under the Health and Safety Code Section 5021.86, which requires that a program recipient use at least 10% of its allocation for services for the homeless youth population. Local homeless action plans details a planned approach to providing continuum of homeless services, strengthening local systems capacity, emergency and temporary shelter, permanent shelter, et cetera. The eligible use of funds were outlined as the structure and the goals. There will be more discussion on this, and more will follow, and I will update as soon as we have more information. From the discussion that we had, they will probably, if it goes to that point, be looking for city support, and in turn, the city is asking for support with some of the funds that have been exhausted, and we'll see where we go from there. Updates from the city, Claudia Calderon was articulate in providing the report for Porterville. At the Porterville Welcome Center, unduplicated number as of February 28th is 2,004. This is since the Wellness Center, the Welcome Center, opened. The daily individuals who access service has increased slightly to a daily average between 75 and 80, with some days seeing as many as 90 for meals and services. They continue to provide services on Wednesdays and link events every other Wednesday. They will be increasing the beds available to 15 beds in both emergency and bridge housing programs. Originally, it was 10 due to COVID restrictions. Therefore, the total beds will go from 20 to 30. The Link Committee continues to meet. Permanent local housing information was provided. The CDBG Action Plan and substantial amendment, there was an update. The city of Porterville will hold a public hearing on the 19th at the regular council meeting to seek input in the development of the 2022-23 CDBG Plan and an amendment to the 2021-22 Action. Tulare and Visalia provided information. It was important for us to be in person because we had the ask with the funds, but it was also important to bring to attention. Before adjournment, we are always asked if any of us have any questions or comments. I was hoping that a representative from the Sheriff Department would have been there to make my ask so that I could ask a question pertaining to Porterville. I went ahead and prompted it and did bring it to the table, and I stated that we would like to have a discussion. There have been homeless who have been arrested from other areas. They are brought to the South County Detention, the jail facility in Porterville on Scranton. They are booked, then released, and they are released in the area of the city. They are not from Porterville. They are from surrounding areas. Visalia stated that they have been dealing with this problem themselves. Mr. Eric Scott, who was the legal counsel present, said he would take the information back, and someone would reach out to us. This hasn't happened. I just wanted to let my colleagues on the dais know that I will be reaching out to the sheriff so that he may designate someone from his department to work with us. This concludes my report. The next meeting is April the 20th. The City Selection Committee, council members still before I go on to the next one. Did you have anything to summarize on that one? Thank you. The City Selection Committee. It was comprised of mayors or the representative. There was unanimous approval of the minutes of January the 19th. The focus of this meeting was only to appoint a city member to the new Tulare, to the new Kings Tulare Master Plan for Aging, the Advisory Committee. The timeline process was explained. The meeting went quickly. Linda Launer from the city of Dinuba volunteered. She is the representative. Patrick Isherwood volunteered, and he is the alternate with the unanimous approval of those present. The next one is Council of Cities. From Porterville, Councilmember Stowe, city manager, and I attended the meeting. All 13 cities were representative. We had not met since 2020. The minutes that were approved were those of January the 15th, 2020, and the minutes of the special meeting of May 22. They were unanimously approved. The selection of an alternate transit representative to the TCAG Board became the discussion. Greg Gomez shared his term was up in 2019, but continued to attend. Due to his responsibilities at work, he recommended that this position be filled. The position for the alternate, according to Mr. Gomez, was Councilmember Virginia Garola. The motion was to table the item to bring it back to the next meeting for city managers to send out to full council in their respective cities to see if there would be a willingness to be considered for both these positions with an emphasis of the description and the duties of the responsibilities. This item will be brought back to the Council of Cities meeting in May. The discussion of the County Homeless Task Force funding was brought to the table. The three of us from the city were in person at the homeless task force meeting, and we just ended up going to this one altogether. I unfolded the dialogue, and I shared that I had asked the question at the meeting for the funding that had come to the county and that other funds that were designated for the home population, simply to say that there were no funds available. The efforts went to Project Room Key and Home Key in Tulare and Visalia Projects, the Tagus Gardens and Sequoia Village. The discussion of the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation with the resignation of Mr. Nathan Ollie became a concern and a dialogue and discussion, a brief discussion of the California Roundtable Initiative. And the next meeting is scheduled for May the 18th. That concludes that report. We will now go on to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a meeting on March 17th for the governing board of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. I was fortunate to meet Martha Guzman, who's the Region 9 Administrator for the Environmental Protection Agency and reports directly to the head of the EPA. I was proud to tell her about the magnificent work happening here in Porterville to improve air quality and public transportation, also to promote clean energy and water sustainability in our area, an area that is designated as underserved, so it's remarkable, all the things that are happening. And I gave her a synopsis, and she was intrigued, and so I extended an invitation for her to come and visit and see it firsthand and hope to hear from her office at some point. Actions taken during the meeting were primarily one action that had a few facets to it. We accepted $168,425,600 in state farmer program funds for use with the district's agricultural equipment replacement program. We took action to adjust the incentive levels for the funding because with a lot of what's happening in the world, the costs for that equipment have gone up tremendously, and the incentives are percentage-based, so we adjusted the percentages to be something that would keep people wanting to upgrade their agricultural equipment to be less polluting. We also increased the incentives for the district's program for the replacement for small agricultural operations of less than 100 acres in size, which I think is a great benefit to the small farmer to keep him or her in the business of farming as well as upgrading equipment to something that can last as well as be sustainable. We also granted the executive director authority to adjust the incentive levels as necessary to keep engagement with the program going and to be able to implement a successful program. And that completes my report.
Thank you. The Tulio River Active Transportation Plan Meeting of March 17th. This was our first meeting, and we had, from the Tulio River Tribe, Councilmember Garfield, from TCAG, the executive director, Mr. Ted Smalley, his planner. My position on this is the TCAG Vice Chair. And from the city, we have Mr. Lawless, the city manager, Jason Reidenhour, and then we have Mr. Knight that did attend. And from, there were representatives from Caltrans, and the Four Creeks planners were in attendance. We discussed the outreach opportunities with Mr. Garfield to do a walking audit up at the reservation to the ATP plan with the opportunities. The existing studies were brought, plans and maps, and we will be meeting monthly to coordinate with regard to the funding opportunities and then the planning ideas and the next step. Were to do the walking audit, which is scheduled... planning ideas. And the next step, were to do the walking audit, which is scheduled this Friday. We will be going up there and having a walking audit with the group and the members of the tribal council so they can provide the input and then what it is they need for projects up on the reservation. That concludes that report. The Eagle Mountain Relocation Committee, I am going to take item number seven and number 13 and combine them. On March 17th, the meeting notice was received after the meeting had started, and technically, the meetings are for 12:00 noon, and the meeting started at 10:00. And by the time I received it, it was 12:40, so there was no attendance on our behalf of the meeting of March 17th. On March 24th, information was not sent out, and there wasn't a meeting with any to that regard. And Councilmember Tate, you attended the meeting on March 31st, if you'd like to report out.
Yes, I attended, represented the city, and they basically went through all the different construction projects that are all happening at once, and that to see where they're at as far as on the schedule and coming together. And they're making a lot of steady progress. They seem to be on track as far as, and I always appreciate being able to go out and meet because I get to see the progress. We watched it from the ground up, so it's kind of a big deal. Anyway, so there were really just minor recommendations that pertain to the city, which had to do with utilities, and I passed out all this information on to our city manager. And then I will, we'll see what happens this Thursday. It's supposed to be every Thursday at noon, but sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. So anyway, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Because of the time, I'm going to do one more AB 1234 report, and then nine, I'm going to, just to, excuse me, I'm going to do eight and 15, and then I will put nine through 14 at the end of scheduled matters. So we will go with item number eight, the Porterville Area Development Authority.
Thank you, Your Honor, and this is just a brief report. We had a meeting on the 18th of March, of course, taking care of the typical business of approving the minutes and approving the AB 361 Act requirements for remote meetings to allow that to continue to happen. The item that had been carried over from a previous meeting was based on the eligible expenses for reimbursement for the tertiary treatment wastewater facility from those doing the work. And I'm happy to announce that there was consideration and approval for the reimbursement of $852,541. There will be more requests coming, but it was good to see that we, the information that we required and the format we required it was almost identical to what we received, and we look forward to continuing on the path we're going and hopefully be able to continue with those reimbursements. We also had an update on the storm drain recharge retention basin, as there's, that is located in the area, and there had been some technical aspects of that that were being discussed, the local roads and improvements in the area as well as coordination, looking into the needs of the FAA as well as the needs for activities in the area. So we had an update on that as well as the Active Transportation Plan, which you had mentioned previously, and would like to note the walk across the Swinging Bridge, which was a very eye-opening experience, as it is, it is really a swinging bridge, and I was glad to be able to see what's happening, and hopefully, there's potential for something, an improvement upon that at some point in time, but it was really something to observe. So that's my report.
Thank you. Once again, the reason I'm going to pull the other ones and do them at the end of scheduled matters, because the majority are more of my reports that I attended, and we need to conduct business, and I will do mine after the scheduled matters, the majority of them. But number 15, Vice Mayor, the COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee meeting.
Yes. So myself and Councilmember Tate and significant staff attend the COVID ad hoc, and we try to get a lot of items as they come in on this committee. So on March 30th, we met, and some of the items we discussed were, we were notified that the chamber canceled the Iris Festival and Car Show, which was scheduled for April 23rd. We have, we reviewed a lot of community use permit requests, and one of them was Blessings of Liberty Freedom Rally to be held at Centennial Park for April 23rd. We discussed the Cinco de Mayo Parade on Main Street, April 30th, and Fiesta at Veterans Park. We discussed another event for Cinco de Mayo Kickback at the Landing 13, just outside of that, at the city parking lot on April 30th. There is, we received some follow-up information regarding the Southern Sierra Film Festival to be held at Centennial Park, June 22nd. Discussed the Porterville Fair at the fairgrounds from May 11th through the 15th. Another item was the Freedom Fest to be held at the Sports Complex, July 2nd. Updated on vaccine incentive event with Sierra View Medical Center. That was going to be held March 31st through April 2nd, so right after the meeting. Another item we talked about was city having a housing fair at Centennial Park, April 29th. City Arbor Day, Tulio River Parkway, also April 29th. And then we had some discussion around the city utilities and shut-offs and penalties, and discussed rearranging that program possibly through June 2022. We talked about the city business licenses, also with the same date, possible date, and then discussed some micro-business assistant grants for 2,500. We talked about the outdoor dining permits and ending that program effective June 1st. I think we discussed it was only one or two, and I think they were ready to, to close that out. Also discussed summer youth volleyball at the Santa Fe Gym in June, summer youth day camp, Santa Fe Gym in July, and then just discussed bounce houses in the parks, and we're going to refer some liability information to our city attorney. So I think that covers it, unless Councilmember Tate has anything I missed.
We just talked about the, the event that just passed last Saturday at the Veterans Park, the Reed Day. So that was, I attended that event, and we had, I think, just about every school representative there. They had all kinds of games, and people were reading books, and they had little tags around their necks. It was fun to watch them and the families because their, the age range was amazing. Also saw some community members and clubs that were involved with this, reading to children, and they had little tags around their necks, and they got a punch for participation. And when they got enough little holes in their, their little necklaces, then they got to go and select a book of their choice. So it was well organized. It was a good time. It looked like a big fair, actually. And I think, I'd like to thank Parks and Leisure for organizing it and helping us with that event. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We will now go on to the reports. This is the time for all committee commission board reports, subcommittee reports, and staff informational items.
Just one staff informational report, which was an annual update that was requested by the city council on progress made by the Temple Appraised Christian Fellowship, which had a five-year construction. The final improvements would have, grew over five years. In their report, they indicated they've collected 85% of the funds to be able to make those improvements. And this is, this is the one-year report of the five years that was allowed by the council.
Thank you very much. Does the council have any? Okay. Thank you so much. We will now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. Counsel?
Your Honor, I'd like to pull item 24.
Mayor, can, we're going to pull number 13 just to continue it, so to another meeting.
Number 13 is pulled, and number 24 will be placed after the scheduled matter before the AB 1234 reports, to make that clarification.
Right. And then number 16 needs to also be pulled for a clarification.
And number 16 will also be pulled?
Well.
Actually, I can make the clarification just for council. I just wanted to note that the, that there's some slight changes to the agreement that's attached, the version, and it's actually in the back if anybody wants to see it. But there are some small changes, and they're really just clarification. And you, I just wanted to note them before you guys, you can still approve it along with the rest of the consent calendar. I, there were just some changes that needed to be made. They needed to be a little bit more specific with regard to what was very low and low income with regard to that particular agreement, the regulatory agreement. So, and then there were a few other minor tweaks, but they were all just clarifications. Thank you.
So this one is for item number 16.
That is the correct.
This is the correct one, with a cleanup and an adjustment to the number of units. I see the difference. I see it right there. All right. Okay. So do we, how does council wish to proceed from items 1 through 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, through 18, through 23, 25, 26, and 27?
Your Honor, I move to approve said items with those pulled and any, noting any abstentions.
We have a motion on the table?
I second that.
And a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. We will now move on to the scheduled matters. Item number 28.
Thank you, Your Honor. We now have four scheduled matters before the council this evening. The first is to consider the Porterville Chamber of Commerce request for extension for annual reports. As the council will require, recall, on the recommendation of the city's Internal Audit Committee, at its meeting on October 19th, 2021, the city council approved the current agreement between the city and the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. Pursuant to that agreement, the chamber is required to provide its annual financial report and reported programs and activities for the prior year, as well as its written plan for the same for the upcoming year. Due to recent changes of the chamber's president, CEO, and the, the chamber has submitted a written request that the council grant an extension to the chamber of the required reports from April 15th, it was honored before April 15th, to May 17th, 2022. The chamber intends to present the reports required by the agreement to the council for its consideration at its meeting on May 17th, 2022. So recommendations that city council consider the written requests of the Porterville Chamber of Commerce to provide an extension for the provision of annual reports as required by the current agreement between the chamber and the city from April 15th to May 17th, 2022. Happy to answer any questions or providing further information.
Thank you. I'm bringing it to council. Counsel, you have any questions?
No questions, but I have a comment. I don't mind extending their agreement for 40 days if they extend our ability to cancel the agreement for that same amount of time after we look over their program.
So if I did the math right, just to make sure, that would put it, so if we, if the extension goes to May 17th, and we'd ask, and our, we had until, I think, June 1st?
Correct.
So we would need to go, or actually, I'm sorry, we had until May 1st.
May 1st.
So if they're going out, so we would go till, till June 3rd if we're going out to May 17th. If that works for everybody.
Councilmember Reyes?
Well, it's, I mean, obviously, it's frustrating, the issues here, given the contract was just renegotiated recently, understanding there's been some changes as somebody, I'd say aptly, but incorrectly noted, changes that have happened over the past few years. But I would have a question for the representative from the chamber, if they wanted to come before us.
Please.
Yes. My, my question to you would, and you heard the comments that were made on your behalf. I just wanted to ask you, do you want to clarify any of the inaccuracies that were given by that person? I hate to put you on the spot, but I'd love to give you an opportunity to, to clarify for the record some of those statements that were a little bit incorrect.
Absolutely. You know, from what I've heard, like I said, I stepped into the position about a week ago and...
You might want to speak into your mic so they can hear you back there.
Okay. So yes, I stepped into the position about a week ago, and, you know, from my understanding, we are required yearly to be able to report to the city any financial activities and any of those matters. I do know that, you know, the history that was reported as far as turnover was a little incorrect, and, and so I do thank you guys for the consideration of this extension and, and for, you know, considering this so that I am able to get that information for you guys and be able to be better prepared.
And just to clarify, you weren't appointed or hired by the Porterville City Council?
No, thank you. So I was not. The chamber is a separate entity from the city council and the city of Porterville. So the chamber does have its own board of directors, and that hiring process and all that decision-making is made by them as far as the CEO and is not directly related to city council.
Thank you.
I appreciate, please, hang on a second. Okay, all right. I have read, again, having been a part of the Audit Committee, I have read and reread the agreement, and because it was mutual, we went by it paragraph for paragraph with the representative then from the chamber and the chairperson of the board at that time. And I can understand, you know, with the turnovers and the things that have happened, why you would want to extend, and you have asked for that request, or the request has been asked. But I want to clarify. It was, and it is still my understanding, with the information that we received, the Iris Festival was canceled by the Porterville Chamber, not the city of Porterville. And it was canceled and not postponed because according to the agreement that I'm looking at under chamber responsibilities, there is going to be a planning of an October event, which is the Fall Community Festival, which would be separate from the Iris Festival, which was canceled. The question, because it has been brought to the community that... The question, because it has been brought to the community that the Iris Festival has been, it's information that is out there, and brought to us that the Iris Festival is going to be held in October, I said, it was canceled, and I will clarify here to ask the question. Will there be two events in October? Since it's being postponed, the message out there is, the Iris Festival is being postponed, and it's going to be handled in October. So what's going to happen with the October Community Festival?
That is a great question, and so thank you for clarifying that, because it was my understanding as well that it was going to be postponed to a later date. So that is something that I would like to reevaluate with the board, and if I could come back with that answer for you, I would appreciate that.
And that's why I'm asking the question, because we received the information that it was canceled, and then postponed, when it's in the agreement that there is an October Community Fall Festival, and that would lead to, if you're going to move the Iris Festival to October, are you going to have two events?
That is a great question.
That, Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Yes, I, I do, first, thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for clarifying or asking the question about the hiring process, because I, I think sometimes there is a misconception that the city hires and pays the salary, and, and we don't. And I, I think one of the items is that we, I sit on the audit committee as well, so we did just review, actually, I believe it was more than one meeting, we spent going through, and we had attorneys on both sides helping us go through the document and revising according to what each, you know, entity felt needed to be incorporated. And I, I thought we did really well going back and forth on that. So one of the items that I just wanted to address was earlier, when it was said that the chamber comes here and reports like, as if they're on trial, I think the wording was. I, I believe that when we had the discussion during the audit committee, that the chamber and the city felt very comfortable with that reporting process, because it allowed the chamber to come and state all the things that they're doing, all the work that's going on, you know, and then we could be a better partner. So we both felt really good with that reporting process, and it gave a way to answer to the funds that are being, you know, accounted for, and how they are being spent and, and tracked. So I, I think those were just things that we both put into the agreement together. I just wanted to kind of state that, maybe for your information as well, to help, you know, your discussion as you come back to talk.
I appreciate that.
And thank you.
I'd also like to make one comment, and I'll, I'll, the dollar amount of the 8,750 is not something that the city of Porterville brought forth. It was the Porterville Chamber that asked for those installments from a previous board, or maybe some of the port of directors. It wasn't us. It was an agreement that we said, okay, but it was requested on behalf of the Porterville Chamber to have the installments and payments. Councilmember Tate, did you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Councilmember Stowe?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Reyes?
Just to expand on, on the history of the quarterly payments, back, I, gosh, I, I think it was probably 2017 when Stephanie Cortez was the CEO. There were, as a request, I think the motion was from that time, Vice Mayor Ward. I was the second on the, on the motion to require quarterly reports, because the, the question was whether the contract was being, was being abided by. So the, the quarterly reports were required previously, or prior to the quarterly installments being requested. The installments were requested just as a matter of technicality to the reports being given quarterly. So with the aforementioned failures to reports, report, that was prior to the quarterly system of reporting that we had. So just to clarify the history on the quarterly notion.
Councilmember Stowe?
Good to have you.
All right, then I'm gonna, thank you so much. Very much. Counsel, how do you wish to proceed?
As I aforementioned, I wouldn't mind extending it 40 days if they would grant us 40 days to, after their report, to make up our minds if we want to extend the contract. And I'll make that in a motion.
You make that in a motion.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you'd like to make a motion to go ahead and grant the extension on the condition that an extension is also granted on the, on the termination provision in the agreement, which means basically that the extension would go to May 17th for the, for the chamber, and the termination extension would go to June 3rd.
June 3rd, correct.
And I can put together an addendum to that effect for the, for the agreement, to memorialize that.
All right. We have a motion on the table to that regard for the extension, with then the wording on the agreement, the extension on both sides with extending the extension request and then the others. So we have that motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, let's call for the vote. Passes for one. Thank you. We will now go into item number 29.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next time, a second scheduled matter is to consider Assembly Bill 481, which is law enforcement, military equipment, funding, acquisition, and use. And this is going to be an item presented by Chief Costello and the city attorney.
Mayor members of council, thank you, Mr. Lawless. Assembly Bill 481 requires law enforcement agencies to attain approval from the applicable governing body via adoption of military equipment use policy by ordinance prior to law enforcement agency funding, acquiring, or using military equipment. The Porterville Police Department seeks City Council adoption of the attached military equipment use policy, 704, in attachment 1, in order to allow Porterville Police Department to continue to use the vital equipment specified therein. Items deemed to be military equipment by AB 481 are used as a component of overall best practices for law enforcement agencies throughout the country. These tools are used by law enforcement agencies to enhance citizen safety and officer safety. Loss of these items would jeopardize the welfare of citizens of Porterville and police officers within the Porterville Police Department. The term military equipment, as used in AB 481, in fact, does not necessarily indicate equipment that has been used by the military. On a side note, the Porterville Police Department currently does not have any equipment provided by the federal government or DOD, Department of Defense. Attached to the staff report in an inventory list in Porterville Police Department's military equipment as defined by AB 481, the definition of military equipment includes items such as unmanned, remotely piloted aerial or ground vehicles, armored personnel carriers, or other equipment, breaching apparatuses, certain types of firearms and ammunition, explosive breaching tools, and certain projectile launching platforms. Porterville Police Department is committed to using the most and update tools and equipment to safeguard the citizens of Porterville. Many of these items deemed to be military equipment by AB 481 are in fact employed by the Porterville Police Department and law enforcement agencies across the country in order to specifically reduce risk to community members. These items provide police officers with the ability to safely revolve, resolve volatile situations with, which otherwise might rise to the level of lethal force encounters. To that end, the items at issue in this report accompanying military equipment use policy also provided Porterville Police Department, police officers with vital tools that facilitate compliance with its stringent use of force policy. The proposed ordinance seeks to approve the Porterville Police Department's policy 704, which constitute Porterville Police Department's military equipment use policy. The policy includes the current use and cost of each item. These particular items and their stated use have been in place prior to implementation of AB 481. Further accusations of any items deemed to be military equipment, if not previously authorized by ordinance and/or policy, will require further public meeting, policy updates, and council approval. The proposed ordinance and policy 704 safeguards the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. The policy 704 ensures that there are safeguards, including transparency, oversight, and accountability measures in place. For instance, policy 704 requires the Porterville Police Department Investigation Services Lieutenant will ensure that the Porterville Police Department complies with policy 704. PPD will continue an annual audit of the military equipment. Members of the public are provided direction per the policy on how to register complaints for violations. All items which result in the use of force will be investigated, as it already is required in our existing policies. There are no reasonable alternatives to these items listed. Porterville Police Department has not discovered alternative items that can achieve the same objectives for the officer's safety and civilian's safety. There is significant interest in ensuring that law enforcement continues to have access to this equipment that will provide police officers as many options as possible to safeguard lives, ensure safety, and protect civil liberties. The use of these tools identified above are vital to Porterville Police Department's mission, and will continue to be strictly regulated through an internal process and oversight. It's the recommendation that the City Council approve and give first reading to the ordinance, establish a military equipment use policy, and declaring the ordinance to be an emergency measure to take effect immediately upon adoption.
Not that part?
Not that part? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. It's not an emergency ordinance. This is actually a regular ordinance, so we'll get there.
Okay. My apologies. And the City Council set a public hearing for May 17th, 2022, to hear and consider any public input prior to final adoption, and that the City Council authorize posting of the proposed policy on its website as required on or before April 17th, 2022. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions? How does council wish to proceed if there are no questions?
I'll make, go ahead.
Someone, please?
That we approve the ordinance, you know, establish the military equipment use of policy, and that we set a public hearing on May 17th, and direct staff to propose a policy of city website, required as before April 17th.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table.
I'll second.
Second, no further discussion. Please call for the vote. Passes unanimous, 5-0.
May I read by title only, please? An uncodified ordinance of the City Council of the city of Porterville regarding police acquisition and use of, quote, "military equipment," quote.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number 30.
Thank you, Your Honor. The third scheduled matter you have this evening is consideration of your status and review of declaration of local emergency. I'll provide an update from information and data that was provided to the council three weeks ago. So declaration of local emergency was initially adopted by the council on March 17th, 2020, was reviewed and made finding declaration on March 15th, 2022, and so now we'll provide statistics from the Tulare County COVID-19 website as of this afternoon, April 5th, 2022. So since your last meeting, there have, in the last three weeks, there's been 1,148 new COVID cases for a total of 1,041,14. In the 93257 area code, 76 of those were in this area, for now a total confirmed cases of 20,941. There was an increase of 50 deaths, up to 1,412, an increase in recoveries of 1,736, which is 102,388 total. And then total active cases right now decreased by 640 from three weeks ago to active, current active cases of 852, which saw total, total active cases in the 93257 area code of 144, which is a reduction of 212 from three weeks, three weeks ago. Vaccinations administered increased 1,694, for a total of 282,327, but, total vaccinated. Hospitalizations have decreased, so I reported total hospitalizations was reduced 24, down to 15, which Sierra View currently has eight of the 15 hospitalized, which is an increase of two over three weeks ago. Of those 15, 13 are confirmed, which is a reduction of 25, and Sierra View has three of the confirmed, which is two less than they were before, suspected, and there was a conflict between the counties and Sierra View's website. So the hospitalizations, according to the county's website, was that there were two, but Sierra View is showing that there are five hospitalized that are suspected of COVID. So there's a, I would say it's not consistent between the county's website and Sierra View's website on suspected cases. In the ICU, there's no, according to the county website, there is no current ICU patients of COVID. Sierra View is reporting two in the ICU, but they don't give the reasons whether they're COVID or not. Good news that CDC reclassified Tulare County from a medium to low transmission county effective March 31st, 2022, and that's based on 100 cases per 100,000 over seven-day average, which saw a reduction since your, since back when I last reported three weeks ago from six, from, it's reduced 6.5 per day. It's right now at 2.8 per day. So that falls in what's called the low transmission county. There was a, since your last meeting, a community roundup event that occurred on March 31st through April 2nd, that saw 573 participants, which was about half of the participants that occurred from the prior roundup that occurred on March 10th to 12th, a total of $1,803,000 of ARPA funds have been expended in support of that vaccine and business support I had previously reported on unpaid utilities, so there'll be an update to that in the future. But before you, and as previously reported by, by the vice mayor and Councilmember Tate, before the City Council this evening would be four, five considerations. First, whether it would be to review and determine whether the need exists for continued local emergency. Consider adoption of the draft resolution of Assembly Bill 361, which would allow for emergency connect, emergency connection to meetings electronically, which I'm finding across our county, lots of quorums aren't being met without that ability. Before would be whether or not unpaid utilities continue to be allowed, not, they're, right now, we're not doing any turnoff of utilities for lack of payment, and that was continued until this meeting by the council back in December. It's the recommendation of the ad hoc committee that, that program ends June 1st, as well as there's been a, no imposition of late fees for business license for the, I think they're $25 every six months, and it's a recommendation that that also cease June 1st, when the billing for the next business license cycle comes up. And then outdoor dining permits also have been continued until this evening's meeting, which it's the recommendation of the ad hoc committee to terminate that program June 1st as well. Right now, we have just one business that's taking advantage of that. With that, those are the, those are the five points for consideration. Happy to answer any questions, providing further information.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Direction? Please.
Okay. I'd like to continue the electronic meeting portion, of course, and if that's possible, in case someone else can't make it to the meeting in person, we can continue electronically. I'd like to return the utility fees and, and late fees. Discontinue that. This is my, discontinue the vaccination incentive. I think if anybody's going to have a vaccination, they would have had it by now. And as far as the, the local emergency, we, we can, I think, last meeting, we did away with the mask mandate, correct?
Say again.
Last meeting, didn't we do away with the masks and?
That had already been, that had already been revised, guys. That had already been, there had already been revised guidelines that had been out at your last meeting. What, what was discussed was, so AB 361 is not, as you see in many cases, bodies are taking action on AB 361 resolutions to allow that without declarations of emergency, and so it's not necessary. It only remains in effect as long as the state of California contains its, maintains its emergency, or it times out, I think in 2024. So it's, so your action, any, if the, if the Council were not to take an action to continue its emergency, it would request that AB 360, at least the, that resolution be approved, and then that can come as a consent item, just as many bodies are doing that as well. In the vaccine event, I guess I would only say certainly we've seen a downward trend on those, taking advantage of that. There is a second booster, that's, which Sierra View is going to begin offering the second boosters, I think, next weekend, which they are also reducing their hours, given the lack of, lack of participation they've seen. So they were doing Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They're now only going to be doing Fridays and Saturdays, so discontinuing Thursdays. And it's really an unknown as to what extent the second boosters may be taken advantage of.
Just a question. So the county has approved the use of the vaccinations for that second booster?
That's our understanding from Sierra View.
Thank you. So what I hear, what I heard in some summation is to stop the declaration, discontinue the vaccination incentive, continue the AB 361, and to pers, to continue, I mean, the shut-off of the water and outdoor dining permits as of June the 1st? Is that what I heard?
Outdoor, discontinue the utilities and late fees.
Correct. And the, there's only one outdoor dining permit, is that correct?
Right.
And that would be as of June the 1st? Is that, that's correct, the summary?
That was the recommendation from?
That was the recommendation that was made. Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. That could be a motion.
No.
No. It has to be a.
That was during the earlier part, public comment during the beginning of the meeting.
We have that motion on the table. Is?
I'll second.
And there is a second. Is there any further discussion? Call for the vote.
I have, can I ask one?
Please.
What if we considered having the, what's that called? The incentives for the, you know, things started getting bad, or, you know, people wanted to get the booster, the next booster? How would we go about that, since we're discontinuing it right now?
There's no need to have a declaration of emergency to have a vaccine event. That is an independent, that, that is at the discretion of the City Council and the use of your American Rescue Plan Act funds. I would say that that is on what's called the restricted side. That is, one of the allowable uses of those funds is to support vaccination efforts, and so it's not necessary to have a declaration of emergency.
Okay.
If I may, just ask a clarifying question. So with, with that, the process could either be that the Council adopts, bringing back the incentive, or the COVID Ad Hoc Committee at a meeting recommends to the Council to take that action?
Yeah. That's a, completely at the discretion of the Council. We'll have a conversation about, at your, at your goal setting about ARPA funds, and how you wish to continue to, what your, what the plan would be for the expenditures of those funds over the next four years.
Okay. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous, five zero. And we will now move. We will now move on to?
So we need to come back. So we have a new scheduled matter, which was previously item number 24, which was approval for community civic event for the Tulie River Economic Development Corporation. Secretary Mayau, kickback, scheduled for April 30, 2022. Council, the item was pulled at the request of Councilmember Reyes. Happy to answer any questions, provide the staff report.
Can I, I'm in conflict, yes?
Yeah, might just?
I think for perception, at least. So should I step out also?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
And I would like to make a comment for transparency purposes, that I will probably abstain from this, and I'm making it known now, because this item was brought to my attention before it was submitted and to ask for support, so I will go based on what the Council decides. A member of the community brought this to my attention, so I am disclosing that right now. Before it was brought to Council, so please go ahead.
Okay. So the, the purpose of pulling this item was after, after reviewing the submission for the event and the map for the event, and also noting that it's the same day as the parade that was approved earlier in the meeting. The map indicates that the entire parking lot is to be utilized for a car show. So knowing that the morning, the parking on Main Street will be unavailable to the five or six small businesses in that area, as well as the complete parking lot for the five or six small businesses in that area, and also noting that those in attendance of the car show will probably use the street parking, which would underpark five or six small businesses, including the restaurant that's sponsoring the event. I wanted to find out from, I was going to ask Mr. Ridenhour, what he felt impacts on parking would be that day, given the parade in the morning, given the fact that some people may or may not move their cars immediately following the parade, as well as the parking stalls that are required for businesses to be open. And of course, if, if it's, if there's no impact, or there's an impact, that's, that was my question. Because we've heard from small business owners, and last meeting, one who is directly in front of that parking lot, and probably utilizes that parking lot, I wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence for those small businesses.
Thank you, sir. As you noted, the, the parking lot is a city parking lot, that's why there's before you is a community civic event. This isn't a downtown parking district in this area on, on Main Street. So also, as you noted, that most of the businesses along this area do not have private onsite parking, because it is, you know, downtown on Main Street, so there's parking districts that, that allow for that to take place, so this is a city parking lot to facilitate This may on, on a weekend, I haven't spoken to the businesses on Main Street about, about the, the proposed event, but reducing the available parking in an area that is dependent upon off-site parking in city facilities, it could have an impact. One option could be to, to have the, work with the applicant to have the smaller reduction, so there may be some, there, there is effectively two parking lots that, you know, could be cordoned off. There is, we looked at that at one point, for an outdoor dining event that was looking to take place there during COVID-19 shutdowns as well, so. Hopefully, did I answer your question?
No, it does. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that I was perceiving the map correctly, as well as the combination of events that are taking place that day, and the likelihood that not everyone may move from that parking lot, or, or the other stalls on Main Street. So I, I don't, you know, I, I think, more appropriately, I think I would require for approval that the business contact the surrounding businesses immediately, letting them know what's happening as a requirement. That way, if there are impacts, we'll find out about them, and then maybe there's a way to negotiate a, a reduction of, of a row of stalls or something like that. But what I don't want to happen is for the City Council to approve this, and then have the small businesses show up at the following City Council meeting and accuse us of taking their parking spaces. So that, I just wanted to bring that to light for the Council before the item was approved, and that's all I had for it.
If I could add just one thing, it, it, what I have found is it's not the small businesses complaining, it's the guy's car that got towed and had to pay to get it out of tow, because he didn't move it. So there, there will be, and this is where the chief ends up getting the call, because, you know, somebody's car was there and got towed, because that's what, so that it has to be noticed, and so I would, I would strongly suggest if this parking lot, because there's a, there's a window there, because the, 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 because the closure's just at beginning at one o'clock, and the parade will probably be finished around noon. So there's, there's that hour window there, that if somebody's parked in that lot and it needs to be vacated, they'll need to do so, otherwise they will be subject to towing. And as long as that is appropriately noticed 24 hours before, I've been on a lot of virus festivals where cars have been towed because of that, and I've gotten calls saying so-and-so cars got towed, and I go, well, sorry that their car got towed, they, well, they had too much to drink at, whatever, you know, the Mecca, and I'm glad they didn't drive home, but their car got towed, because it had to be moved. And that will be the same, same case here, is that if it's properly signed, and if the car isn't moved by one o'clock, it will need to be, it will be towed.
No?
And they are going to sign it, I'm?
They would, they would have to. That's the only way to enforce the closure, under your, under your code.
They do have intention to, hopefully they have intention to sign, to post that. I'm sure they have intentions to post it. Or they have to do so for it.
Excuse me. There is a representative, I hear, in the audience, but I don't believe that we need to have a discussion, and I know that all the information is here, that summarizing it, this noticing has to be done by them, and?
Yeah, so if they're closing it at one o'clock on that day, then it would need to be noticed by 1:00 PM the day before.
Okay. All right. Councilmember has no other questions. Do you have any comments? Bringing it back. Let's call for the vote. Oh.
Did we, was it?
There's no motion, that's what I'm saying. Bring it back to Council.
I'll move to approve with the added requirement that the event organizer notice to the businesses in the area that this is going to be happening at least a week prior to the event.
And the posting of the parking lot?
And I think the, the posting of the park is 48 hours, so?
24 hours.
24 hours before. So that'll be there, but just, just so that the businesses have a chance to redirect their customers, or put a sign on the, on the door that says, if you're coming in this day of the parade, park over here, over there, and, you know, I, I think that's a fair thing to do.
All right. I know that Mr. Roman is here, and he's a gentleman that reached out to me, but I'm going to encourage him to have this dialogue with city staff to this regard. We've made the motion already, and we have a second, and no further discussion.
I'll second it.
And the second, that's what I'm saying, but I would encourage that communication be made with city staff, and leave a phone number, they can reach out, okay? Let's call for the vote. One abstention and three yeses, so it passes.
Yeah, so the vote will reflect 4-0.
Correct.
Abstention carries with it.
Correct. That's why I disclosed it. All right. Thank you very much. Now we go back to the AB 1234 reports to finish that. The Porterville Chamber of Commerce Installation Dinner, Councilmember Tate and I were in attendance. I'll start with Councilmember Tate.
I was very impressed with the turnout. The place was packed, the food was good, the company was great. It was a nice opportunity to meet and greet, and I really enjoyed myself, and I think everybody else did too. Thank you so much, all that you do. It's hard work, I know, putting these things together, but it was very successful, in my opinion, and I'm glad I got to be there. Thank you.
That evening, I saw Christie in a different role, and she was in the cooking line and serving food, and I saw Mr. Pearson out and about, but I want to say that I have attended this event for numerous years, and for not having had it in a couple of years, to recognize the 2019 award recipients and the 2021 award recipients was simply, simply wonderful to be there, having known everyone that was a recipient, to be able to just have that communication, the networking, once again, and I, a little bit different that some of the, it changed it up a little year, that the 2021 award recipients were with an emphasis on healthcare, and thank you for that, because they did a lot of work during the last couple of years. And I know that once upon a time, Councilmember Stowe was a recipient in 2017, and once upon a time, I was blessed with the honor in 2015 for the Woman of the Year as well, so keep on. That's all I have to say, and it was wonderful to see a lot of people. And what was really different this year, that it was on a Friday, and they had the Lenten for those, the Lenten meal for the Fridays that were for the abstention, and then they had the regular meat and everything else, so thank you for that. It was, it was notice. All right, now we will move on to finish all these other reports, okay? Bear with me. The Tulare County Association of Governments, with the, we met on the 21st of March, it was a virtual meeting. A lot of our meetings are still being held virtually. The action item again was to reaffirm the condition of Assembly Bill 361 to continue remotely. Items of information was the implementation status of the federally funded projects. The action items was to reaffirm the condition of State Assembly Bill 361, the adoption of, oh, to approve the local transportation fund claim for the city of Woodlake. There was one presentation with regard to transit provider updates. One of them was with, one of them was Rich Tree with the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency regarding potential improvements to transit infrastructure. His focus is to improve mobility throughout Tulare County. He shared that the city of Porterville had piloted a new mobility microtransit program, and hopes to expand this same concept throughout the county. He shared that it is a good fit here in Porterville, and this information was provided to the Homeless Task Force meeting on February the 16th. There was 2021, 22 unmet transit needs, outreach methods included, the designing and distributing of the comment cards, posters, and onboard bus advertisements in English and Spanish, direct mailings to an extensive list of agencies, including the Tulie River Tribe, social service agencies, civic organizations, community center, libraries, advertising campaign on Facebook and Instagram. It was then opened up for public hearing, none for comments, none were provided, since this was an outreach that was made, and a meeting was scheduled at the same meeting, it continued, and it will be carried through, it was carried through, through March the 31st. Once all have been received, TCG will review with staff and distribute to the transit agencies. The item to highlight with regard to the Clean California Local Grant Program awards was mentioned earlier when we were announcing the employee of Louisa. Caltrans received 329 applications, approximately 105 applicants were selected and notified on March 1st. Congratulations to the cities of Farmersville, Lindsay, Woodlake, and Porterville. There were four cities selected from the Tulare County area for projects. The city of Porterville was awarded the $3,600, et cetera for the projects submitted, the Santa Fe Byway. The rest of the items were informational. That pretty much concludes this report. The next meeting is April the 18th. Councilmember Stowe, the Tulie, Tulare County Regional Transit Agency.
Thank you, Your Honor. That, too, was a virtual meeting scheduled for March 21st, but we had, we had no quorum. Of course, there was no action was taken, but Director Tree gave us an update on, on the agenda, and the first was California Integrated Travel Project. It was a presentation given to the tech committee by the staff from the California Integrated Travel Project on Phase 2 of the project. Phase 2 includes the contactless fare payment portion of the project. The project is currently being designed and is expected to go online on July 1. expected to go online on July 1 of 2022. The second item that you talked about was a request for proposal for transit operation contractor. TCR TA staff provided an update to the RFP for the transit operation contractor that will operate the transit service for each member agency. And staff informed the committee that the proposals are due March 17th, and interview will be scheduled shortly after the staff estimate that the recommendations for awards will be brought to the board in May 2022. The third was outreach for fairs and service changes. TRC, TCR, TCR TA staff presented a outreach plan to inform the public on the upcoming fair and service changes being proposed to come into the effect on July 1, 2022. Staff recommended contracting with Rethought, Reborn, to assist in performing outreach to each of the member agencies and help spread the word on public meetings to be held throughout Tulare County on social media, newspapers, transit buses, and transit centers. And the next item was Tulare River, Tulley River Tribe of California, and the membership, TRC, TCR TA member provided an update on the ongoing discussion of Tulley River Tribe of California, and has been recommended that the Tulley River Tribes of California consider becoming a member of the agency within the TCR TA. So TCR TA can assist with operating their tribal transit program, and also assist closing out their federal transit administration grants that are in jeopardy of lapsing. Currently, legal counsel from both agencies are discussing the, the TCR TA membership. And finally, just for, for the fiscal year of 2022, bus and transit facilities and low, no emission grant programs, the TCR TA staff requested authorization to apply for fiscal year 2022 bus and, and bus and bus facilities and low and, and no emission grant program funds from the Federal Transit Administration. Approximately 1.5 billion is available from these two programs to assist the transit agency in transitioning its fleet to zero emissions. And currently, the Tulare County Transit is fleet has 42 transit buses that have reached their useful life and are in need of replacing. And so the, the regional transit agency is also needed of funding assistance for the charging infrastructure, as well as new maintenance facilities in Porterville to support the growing fleet of zero emission vehicles. So we're the leaders in that, and that was all that was, well, he basically gave us an update on, and next meeting is scheduled for April 18th. Any questions? Not that I can answer them, but any questions?
That's appreciated. That's a lot. That's, I'm glad you made the meeting.
Well, I made it, but they didn't have it, so
I know. I'm glad you got that information. All right. Thank you so much for that. The next one is the Tulare County Economic Development Meeting, which was held on March 23rd. This is one where Mr. Lawless, Mr. Reidenhour, and I attended in person. The minutes of February 23 were approved. The finances through February 20, through February 28, 2022, were detailed and approved. There was a project incline services update, not much difference from what I reported out at the last council meeting. Three projects that were reported as the most active was a recreation company seeking to pin a glamping site. Tulare County Economic Development in making introductions to various utility companies, state and local, county staff to address project concerns. This project would attract 50 to 400 people per day with 24-hour operations. It may create 20 to 50 new jobs. An entertainment, entertainment company is seeking a large-scale, closed, abandoned, idle, or willing industrial location with a harsh and bleak environment that can act, that can act for a film location for a major science fiction story. Sites, seeking sites that include attributes such as towers, domes, silos, catwalks, et cetera, currently scheduled to film early August through October. The area in which the site is chosen would benefit from economic gains, hotel booking, local hires, temporary jobs. Tulare County Economic Development submitted a proposal, and at this meeting, after we heard all the information, that Tulare County was not selected for this project. A coal storage company was seeking 15 to 25 acres of greenfield land with utility access to build and own 150,000 square foot coal storage facility. It would create 70 jobs by year one, and will potentially grow to 100 jobs by year three. Positions such as warehouse management, administration, clerical, forklift operators, et cetera. They are looking for a location with transportation logistics and a variety of food manufacturers. Tulare County Economic Development has sent out an RFI, RFB. With the resignation of the CEO, Ms. Erica De Oliveira is the Vice President and COO, provided highlights under the Tulare County Economic Development Report. General housekeeping is underway on the existing contracts. Signatures on accounts from the predecessor to her previous contracts. Staff will be overseeing. Relocation guide change of timeline dates from August the 1st to September the 15th. The administration decided to go on with the planned economic summit. It was reported during the meeting, the administration committee has met as to how to move forward with the resignation of the CEO. They would continue to work with staff, and they would not immediately advertise for the CEO position. They are considering a strategic planning meeting within 30 to 60 days. Of course, this led to concerns and intervene, I prompted the dialogue, that with the resignation of the CEO, it certainly raised many eyebrows across the way, especially for us, for the city of Porterville. Mr. Nathan Ollie had completed a full year. When we pulled out under Mr. Saldana, it was a definite that the city did not want to come back. With Mr. Ollie, there is perhaps a reluctance. The dollar amount is coming forth, and what is expected of thus, what is expected of thus, of those who are elected? I expressed that attending the virtual meetings, that there was a disconnect, that we have attended meetings virtually, and the process is reporting and being provided with updates only. It was important for us to be in person. There were several in-person members of the board that were there. Committee members, members engaged in the dialogue with their concerns, with commitments that had been made to work with cities. What works for one city does not work for the others. The makeup of each one is different, especially when it comes to the small cities. A highlight by one of the directors on the admin committee, his thought is about having co-directors. While city managers that were present also participated in the discussion, all dialogue and discussion was respected. The recommendation that was made to slate the next scheduled meeting of April the 27th as a strategic planning meeting, more information will follow. This will become a discussion for council. A highlight was made with regard to the Community Economic Resilience Fund, the ARPA funds. Mr. Adam Peck of the Work First Investment Board said that it was a focus on the underserved population. He would like to see some of that funding come to the Tulare County Economic Development Center. Mr. Jay Lacy of Southern California Edison provided the committee with the slideshow presentation of their economic development services. He highlighted Porterville doing, with, during his presentation, indicating that we were doing great with the transportation and electrification. That concludes our report. My next meeting is Wednesday, April the 20th, 27th. Does council members have any questions with regard to what was being reported out with the resignation? Comment?
Just a comment that I asked him point blank when he was here, whether us joining was going to prompt him to leave, which he said, no. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, once again, the dialogue, it was an opportunity to express concern and bring the dialogue at the meeting. All right, the next one, it says here Kern Community College District Luncheon. This was evolved around the Women's History Month. The Chancellor of the Kern Community College District, Dr. Sonia Christian, had invited me to be to one of the participants on the women's leadership panel alongside Wendy Avila, Kern County Superior Court Judge, and Brenda Lewis, the California Board of Education member and former Associate Superintendent from Kern High School District. It was moderated by Senator Emeritus Gene Fuller. It was an honor to serve on the panel. The emphasis on the panel was to encourage and empower students and others to deliver our message and share about the paths we chose, regardless of obstacles to arrive to our destinations. A strong message on setting goals, education, experience, mentorships, to stay the course even through obstacles, support the growth of others as you give back to your community. I concluded by stating, the panel seemed like it was too short, but that I do believe, and I do have the confidence in the ability of young women in our community to become future leaders. And then I would like to thank the city manager, Mr. Lawless, and city staff that were attending were Juliana Andrade and Eurico Valarde in support. Also from Porterville were Debbie Landers, Alita Verdusco, and my own personal mentor, Val Staley was in attendance. In addition, Dr. Claudia Habee, Porterville College President, and some of her staff. That concludes all the reports for AB 1234. We will now go back and open it up for oral communications. Is there anyone that would like to come forward in oral communications?
Brock Neely address on record. Just so you all know, John and I got our second boosters yesterday morning. We had the second time slot at the VA on the first day that they were giving. The other thing is, we drove down Gettysburg, just off of Blackstone, by the San Joaquin Valley Air Resources Board. Very few green vehicles in their parking lot.
I wanted to read to, to the city council what the Porterville Recorder reported on April 1st from Sierra View. It was a Sierra View Medical Center statement. Zero COVID patients at Sierra View. This was April 1st. Sierra View Medical Center has reached a milestone of sorts and is closing in on the ultimate milestone. On Thursday afternoon, Sierra View reported it had no COVID-19 patients. It's the first time in a long time during the two-year COVID pandemic that the hospital can report such a stat. The Sierra View and Sierra View closed in on having no COVID-related cases of any kind on Thursday. As the hospital reported, it only had one patient suspected of having COVID. It still may be a while before Sierra View has no COVID cases of any kind. No COVID patients or patients suspected of having COVID on a long-term basis, as the pandemic is now, now enters its endemic stage. Sierra View reported three of its 10 ICU beds were in use on Thursday. The hospital has reported it has had 274 deaths due to COVID. And that 274 number has been around for a while, thankfully. So on that day, on April 1st, in the recorder, it said there were no patients, suspected patients, one ICU availability, three of 10 beds in use. That isn't for COVID, though, it's just people in ICU. And then again, 274 deaths. Today on April 5th, Sierra View reported three patients, suspected patients of having COVID, two ICU availability, zero of 10 beds in use, and the deaths are still 274. This is why I don't understand, and this isn't a, this isn't an April Fool's joke, it was in the paper, and it's true. If the city council is following the science, it's time, or should I say past time, to end the proclamation of local emergency, COVID-19. Spend the COVID money giving to the city for something other than vaccinations that don't work and $100 gift cards. Spend it on restoring the downtown businesses that are struggling and fi, and filling all the empty stores with new businesses. Other small cities have a vital downtown area. Why not Porterville? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greg Meister. Responsible City Growth, I just wanted to continue with where I was. In that, on that street with Lombardi, we've gone forward with building 269 more homes in that, in that neck of the neighborhood. And it's going to add at least 600 more vehicles into that neighborhood, and, and it's just going to continue to add to the problem. I think the rating for the street says already at an F. I don't know if they rate F minus, but we're on our way to it, right? And so I think it's something to be addressed and looked at. I know you guys already voted to, to move it forward, and I, I think it's at the county level now. And I don't know if it's out of your hands, but I, I, I would like to hope that we could possibly redirect. I know that we're thinking of whitening Westfield, which probably needs done, but, but Lombardi needs to be addressed. It's unfortunate to hear about the Iris Festival, kind of like our, our Christmas parade this last year, where we, we had it during the day instead of normal, traditional stuff. We got to get back to the tradition of Porterville, which is what it's always been known as, is an all-American city. And that, that's what I strive to reach for as a constituent in the city. And so I'm glad to hear that we're, we're coming to end with these COVID-19 mandates and, and proclamations, and all the stuff that has to do with COVID. Something, just listening to John Lawless's numbers, you know, our, our city is, has, in my opinion, coerced people into taking a shot by paying them. And some of the number, and, and we're, I believe we're the only city in Tulare County doing that. And you could correct me if I'm wrong. I noticed he said that we have eight out of the 13 cases in Tulare County for COVID, but yet we're the most vaccinated. So it's just something that jumps out at me and makes me wonder. Another thing, Mayor Flores, you, when you were talking about the task force for the homeless, you mentioned that the sheriff was dropping the homeless off in the city? Am I, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misunderstanding or starting any kind of rumor. So that's not, you didn't say that they were
I will clarify under other matters, when we go into other matters.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come up? Do we have any virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it now to council for other matters, and Councilmember
Well, as you heard all of the reports that were given this evening, we've been very busy. We don't just attend the council meetings. We are assigned to various groups and committees, and so we have reported everything that's been going on. And if you look at your agendas, you can see just how much work we do for this city. I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify something that was stated at the last meeting regarding my violation of a city ordinance as far as RV parking. I did have an RV when we went into annexation. When I bought my home, there was a pre-existing RV pad that I was utilizing, and I have had it stored when not in use. So I just want to clarify that. Also, I was here and present during the evening that we had one of our residences removed from the chamber, or not the chamber, but from this room. And I want to clarify the fact that I'm one of the members, and I know that I did not order anybody's arrest, and I know that the rest of this team did not order anyone's arrest. So I want to clarify that So I want to clarify that because that's misinformation that I keep hearing. And I heard today specifically that the city council had ordered that person to be arrested. So I just wanted to clarify that I was here. We did not do that. I didn't know anything about it until after the fact. And then I didn't have any details about any of it, and I still don't. So I want to just make that clear. As far as our numbers in COVID, I think that we've done a tremendous job with that. And I know that other citizens from other, other citizens within this county and outside this county have come to our clinics. And there's people that go to their pharmacies or to their physicians and they get vaccinated. And here we are, and our count is down, and we're not seeing any deaths or not the numbers of deaths that we had in the past. And we have reached an endemic, and I think that we should be celebrating that. And thank you so much for your participation. I enjoyed having everyone here tonight and look forward to continuing to do the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes?
Thank you, Your Honor. Freedom of speech is great. I think it's one of the building blocks of the country and keeps us all able to speak our mind as we witness in other places you're not able to. But the real question is, are people big enough to admit they were wrong when they're using what they think is freedom of speech? And I'm here again to correct the record because there's been some misrepresentations here tonight. First, those who claim we don't listen are not listening themselves when they misquote the 99.999% comment that I made. The quote was that I refuse to believe that the few people that come here represent the 99.999% of people who aren't here. And I challenged that 99.999% to speak up through Zoom, email, or to come in because that's how things work. And it did work. I got one email, a solitary email. So I keep hearing these lies being perpetrated by people, and it's clear that there's a focused smear campaign on me personally. That's okay. So keep lying in speeches, keep lying in your comments. I'll be here to set the record straight. Spend all your time, breath, money, words, favors, running against me. Keep fighting a ghost because guess what? I'm not even on the ballot. My term ends in 2024. So either way, whoever wins has to be able to work with me. As far as the person who claims that I have rage issues, there's no proof of this. It looks like there's no proof that that person indicated I had something to do with the aforementioned arrest. In fact, I saw that person kicking, ranting, and screaming, and dropping Councilmember Stowe's name and Chief Costello's name like coins in a wishing well. This is my time, sir. I didn't interrupt you. In fact, I extended your time. This is true. These are the truths. So I say to you, keep doing what you're doing. Please, keep doing what you're doing. The truth is, the writing is on the wall, and when you're measured on the scales, you will be found lacking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stowe.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess you guys probably pulled this off so you can hear me. Unfortunately, I missed all the events this time around or this season. But the only comment that I want to make is regarding the Lombardi Street. We had nothing to do with that street because it's in the county until it's annexed. We can't do anything until it's annexed. It's all county. And I've mentioned that before. You know, when that school was built, we said it wasn't going to be enough. The city has in writing, where the city engineer says, "That's not enough road. You've got to have more access." And the school member, and I was there, and I can attest to it, the superintendent of the school, Mr. Brown, says, "We don't have to do it, and we're not going to do it." And that's the reason that street is so narrow and so small. And we were asked to extend that street and have an exit off for the street that's adjacent to it, and they wouldn't do it. And it was all, that was in the county. We couldn't do anything about it then. And now that it's, until it's annexed, we still can't do anything about it. All we can do is say that this street and that subdivision is okay because we have enough water and everything else to take care of it. Until it's annexed into the city, we can't do anything about the street or the road. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to highlight on the homeless, on the homeless comment with, to Mr. Meister. Okay. I asked the question because it's, it was an important question. A lot of the homeless, and I know that our chief of police has been working, because when they are arrested, they're not from Porterville. They're not all from Porterville, okay? They are arrested and brought over to the jail, to the facility. But when they're released, they're released. And we wanted to have a conversation as a city to sheriff because it's an analogy like to the hospital when they release, they have to have somewhere to go. But instead, what happens because they are also protected by law, the homeless population, and there's certain things that we have to abide to assist. Because when a homeless is removed or released, they should have a location of where to go. And some of the homeless have been released and they are behind certain streets of businesses. And they're not from Porterville. But yet, when they have to contact the business owner so that they can come out each time there is a report. So we wanted to begin the conversation, to engage that, what can we do? What is it that we can do to help and assist? We are the only city that has made an investment through the navigation center, through the wellness center here by CVS for the homeless population. They are provided with services. We wish to expand so that we can house more in the transitional. So we're trying to get more funds so that we can expand that area and to provide more services. We had to actually have a lot of conversations so that the homeless population could have the mental services and the notary services, the health services, all in one spot there. So that's where those conversations are going. And thank you for wanting to know that because we need to have the conversation. And the same happens when the hospital releases a patient, it may not be from Porterville, but they have to have a location to go to. And we have to have those discussions because once they're released, they're released. And we want to see what we can do. You're welcome. Vice Mayor.
The only thing I have is I just wanted to, again, just congratulate the employees of the month. And the reason I wanted to readdress that was just having these documents to read details of the job that they've done this month, well, that they do, and then highlighted this month, I think was really important because I think it reminds us of the teamwork that goes on in the departments to get jobs and projects done. I love that they read off, you know, tasks that they do, responsibilities, and when they mentioned the grants and things, because those are things that affect all of us and that are great for our city. But to hear, you know, the actual people that played a role in that was really good. So I just wanted to, again, congratulate the employees, but also the teams as well.
Thank you. Mr. Lawless.
Thanks. And it's funny that you say that, Vice Mayor, because I had a couple of department heads speak what it was to see their team members come to support them being selected and that it really is a team. And received texts and messages from other directors recognizing other teams there to support their, and they just said, you know, "It's why I chose, it's why I've come from other cities to come to Porterville." And they know who they are, and I appreciate that they've made Porterville their, where they choose to work because they recognize the team nature, team nature of this organization. Speaking of, I wanted to thank the leadership Porterville class. I had an opportunity to work alongside them at their fundraising event on March 26th. And appreciate Summit Charter Academy Principal Martin Medina, who hosted that along with his students. Mr. Jones and Mr. Figueroa attended. I had a chance to talk with them at extensive length. The class's project was a fundraiser, and they raised almost $5,000 to send the Figueroa and Jones family back to Emmitsburg, Maryland for the next memorial. And I had, and Mr. Jones didn't know that that fundraiser was for him. He thought it was for the city to send its folks back to Emmitsburg. I said, "No, this is for you, Mr. Jones." And he was just really, really taken aback by that. So I want to, I want to say thank you to the leadership Porterville class for that. You have two members of that. Derek Matthews worked behind the barbecue the entire time. And fire crews came through and assisted just as a symbolic effort. And like I said, Mr. Jones and Mr. Figueroa were there, and they were just, and they said it, "Porterville's remarkable." They said, "I live in, you know, Mr. Figueroa lives in Tulano, Mr. Jones lives in Tulare," and just said, "You know, Porterville's unique. It really takes care of its own to see the number of folks that come through and to take care of them and when they're not from here and to support them and being able to come back." So I want to thank the leadership Porterville class, I think I said that, but also the facilitator, Virginia Garola, who's done just a fantastic job with that class and just was a really remarkable, and to have the kids involved and the ability for people that were going through the drive-through dinner to interact with Mr. Jones and Figueroa. I mean, they really came out of their shells. They were just there to kind of watch and then actually got in and were helping hand out meals. So it was a remarkable event, and I just want to give credit to LP class for that and two of our own city in acting captain Derek Matthews and Eurico for their participation in that. And then we were in this room on March 28th, and it was really special to see three new members. We hadn't had a badge pinning ceremony in a year and a half. There's a, there's a number of officers who I've missed their pinnings, and so a great opportunity. And we got three of the highest rank in this class. But it was remarkable, and I know the Chief Costello will say this, every single person in that academy is hired out of 46?
Forty-seven.
Every single one has a job. And that is the first, and that just tells you the, kind of the challenges, but also the opportunities in law enforcement right now. So unfortunately, Porterville has three of the top, I think the class leader and an assistant class leader, and they chose to make Porterville where they choose to start, begin their career. So thanks, Chief.
Wow, thank you so much. I know that Councilmember Tate and I were at the badge pinning, and it was wonderful to see the officers get sworn in and have their badges put on and adhere. Hopefully, we'll get to see that with the firefighters, too, pretty soon, maybe?
Yeah, we are right now, well, he's on Zoom.
I know, none of them have come on.
It started as the Safer Six, as they're called, but the Safer Five, one of them, the spouse wasn't, was out of LA, and in the end, the spouse decided not to relocate from Los Angeles to Porterville. So right now, we have five fire personnel that are going through our own academy. Some of them are what are called laterals from other agencies, and some of them are first-time firefighters, but they're going through a six-week, very rigorous training, basically in the Porterville way. And so they'll finish their academy in May. And so we are planning a very special ceremony for that, for the Safer Five, as they're called. These are the firefighters that were hired under the federal grant that was supported by Congressman McCarthy. I really appreciate his support. And how we can acknowledge all the new firefighters and then all the promotions that have happened. I haven't had a chance to pin Chief Costello here yet, or should I say, Shawnee hasn't. So, but the ability to, so that is coming, and we're planning that as a combined police and fire pinning and really recognition of all the folks that have joined our public safety in the last year and a half.
Thank you very much. It is 9:33. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.